Joan, roll call.
Director Kuznick.
Here.
Director Hockers.
Here.
Director Kelzner.
Here.
Director Lowery. Director Parker. Director Thielen.
Here.
Chair Sherman.
Here.
Chief Funk.
Great. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Great. Director Thielen with the second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. We just have one item tonight, payment of invoices. I will make a motion to approve the payment of invoices. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Director Kelzner with the second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Our first item tonight is a report, an annual report for Q Comp. And with that, we're going to welcome Deb Van Kly and Stephen Gordy. And there's the two microphones. I don't know if you want to...
I'll just pull one over. You can sit either way.
Either side.
All right, we're settled. Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Sherman, Directors, and Superintendent Funk. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to share about Q Comp. And then we are also going to talk about the new evaluation rubrics that will go into place next school year. So with that, I'll let Deb take it away.
Great, sounds good. Stillwater?
Do I need to press some? Oh, there we go.
Sorry. Stillwater has had Q Comp since 2015, and just wanted to give a brief overview for some of our newer board members that might not be very familiar with it. It's also called the Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System. And here is what it's designed to improve student learning through these pieces here. I'm not going to read through every single thing, just wanted to highlight a few things in regards to Q Comp. Q Comp has four components, and the four components are around the teacher leader or career ladder opportunities, job embedded PD, the teacher development evaluation plan, and performance pay. Each school district is given some discretion as how they build and how they use the funds for their Q Comp program. On the right side of the table here, what you're going to see is that's how we use the funding in our school district. We continually responsibly adapt our program through an annual survey every year that we bring to an advisory board that consists of district leadership and also educators. Our focus this year was really, you know, around two pretty big things, is really, really strengthening our data inquiry process through our collaborative action teams, but also developing and getting off the ground our centralized coaching model. We use our coaches to implement the Q Comp statutory requirements, and we do that through coaching cycles and our learning lab, where we work with educators one-on-one. We had 428 educators participate in that piece of the program this year, and they develop professional goals, and instructional coaches work alongside them to refine practice, learn new strategies, implement those strategies in the classroom, and really work on that connection between teacher growth and student growth.
So when we think about next year, there's a couple of areas where we're really going to focus. It's the continuation of the work that the coaches have started with the formal coaching cycles and the learning labs. We also are going to expand that. We will do some supportive administrator with building goals and providing job embedded professional development at that level. I'm really excited that one of the tools that will be offered next year is an instructional playbook. It's taken a lot of time and effort on the coaches' part to put this together. The principals are really excited to have access to it, and I think it'll be a nice addition to the work that we're doing. We're also looking at empowering our educators to take on the role of learners. And as part of that process, we're going to be introducing a three-year professional growth plan or model. We've started talking about it this year. We'll continue that next year with more of a full implementation, continuation of the mentor program, and then we'll talk about the new evaluation rubrics shortly.
As I mentioned earlier, we get feedback from all of the educators based on how is the process working for them. What you can see here is some of the impact. This is feedback narratives from different staff members. And just really want to give a shout out to our coaches, Katie Mary, Alicia Farmer, Angie Holobczynski, Darla Simonette, Brittany Perry, and Doug Long. When they came in for this centralized coaching model, it was a real shift in our program, and they dug in and really developed some really meaningful relationships with staff to really move that learning, culture of learning forward. So just extremely grateful for their work, their collaboration. The divergent perspectives that we bring to the table to develop really strong instructional models is really the best part of what I get to do. So you can see from what the staff is saying, and the work they're doing is really, really impactful.
So to transition to talking about the evaluation rubrics, I think the thread that I want to use to bring this all together is, as we think about the use of the instructional coaches, we have an opportunity to not only support our educators at the building level and provide professional learning and job embedded PD throughout the system, we also have an opportunity for those coaches to work on systems changes. And that is something that I'll highlight as we talk about the new evaluation rubric, because this is systems changes, changing, and it will have a big impact on the direction that we're moving. So just to give you a quick, brief overview, the Minnesota statute in 2023 required all districts to revise their instructional or evaluation rubrics. Ours was last done when we adopted the 5D Plus rubric 11 years ago, so it's over time for us to do this work. So we were excited with the opportunity to bring the TDEP group that was a working group that was doing this in previous years back together, and we started meeting in November. We'll talk about that in one of the next slides. I do want to add, it's easy for us to say, doggone it, this is another thing that the state is making us do. And I just want to highlight the fact that this is the right work. Again, 11 years is just too long for an evaluation rubric to not be tweaked or revised or changed. It also gives us the unique opportunity to do some real serious alignment. And finally, this is really what we know is best for kids, as we redo this and create a tool that's based on growth and can align to the professional development and other work we're doing. So some of the changes, just very quickly, there are going to be five competencies with the 5D Plus rubric. You had six. They actually had five, and then they added one, and so they called it the 5D Plus, which I thought was good. There were 30 indicators under the 5D Plus. For ours, we're going to go to two rubrics. So there will be a classroom educator rubric, and then there will be a service and program classroom rubric. So we're going from eight rubrics to two. In both of those rubrics, these five competencies are very similar. The one difference is it talks about instructional design and delivery under classroom educator. It'll be systems design and delivery for the service and program provider. So there's some subtle differences there. For the classroom educator, there are 17 indicators that are part of those five competencies. So in each competency, there's four or five indicators that really identify the observable measures that principals and evaluators will be using to measure teacher growth. And then for the service and program providers, there are 14 indicators. And again, you compare that with the 30 that were part of the 5D Plus. I don't think I talked to any of our current educators who have gone through the full 30 indicators in a three-year cycle. They might have had aspects of the different parts of the 5D rubric, but to cover every indicator every three years was just too broad to do that. The intent now is that we will cover every indicator every three years, which is really what your rubric should be if you want to be effective.
Just wanted to just share with you a little bit what went into the process of developing the two new evaluation rubrics. I'm extremely grateful to have worked alongside Stephen through this work, to be able to take this committee through a process that was very collaborative, really dug into hearing all voices that were around that table. We had about 25 members that were part of that. We began in November, and this is just a little roadmap for you to see this is the work we did on the first time we met, the second time we met. We met starting in November all the way through May. So we started with, you know, the standards of effective practice, some guiding documents that MDE provided us to really guide our work and really incorporate different pieces into the rubric that were aligned to the statute. And I think, you know, what I appreciated most about the work was that at the end of the day in May, the group that sat around that table, they owned the rubric, because they could see themselves and their work reflected in the rubric. And then also the other process, we met to take it through other groups. So it was a very collaborative process, a lot of voices were brought into that space, and just grateful for Stephen's leadership on developing that piece. Would like to thank the committee members, who's a list of members that were part of the work. You know, to be out of your classroom a full day, seven months in a row, that's a pretty big ask. And the work we did was difficult. We had probably over 40 different revisions in the rubric. Just those conversations, really hard conversations, but with the groundwork that was established, just really, really grateful and thankful for the work that the committee did together as part of this. And then this is just to highlight kind of what we had talked about already in those spaces.
I think one of the pieces, you know, and Deb highlighted the collaborative nature of the work, I think one of the pieces that I feel really good about is at the end, the committee really wanted a tool that could be used by evaluators to promote growth of all our educators. And I think it's acknowledging that we have really good and great teachers in the district, but there is always room for growth. This tool is designed to identify that growth and help the evaluator and the educator improve. It's really moving away from that old traditional paradigm where, you know, it was more evaluative in nature, and you're trying to find the deficiencies and then address this. Again, this tool is really identifying where the educator has room for growth and what that looks like between, again, the evaluator, the educator, and then the coaches and the other professional development that we'll have. I think the next slide is questions.
Great. Thank you for this update. It seems like you guys have been busy revamping, so appreciate the efforts. Questions on Q Comp?
Yeah, one.
Mm-hmm.
The evaluation committee members, are those people that came up with the evaluation, or do they do the evaluations? I might have missed that.
Yeah, it's a good question. So they're representatives from all different parts of the district. So this would be for our licensed groups, and so we really worked hard to get members from the OTs, the speech, the psychologists, the social workers, the counselors, the classroom teachers, special ed, and then there were also administrators in this space as well.
It looks like quite a variety out there. I mean...
Yep, yep. Because they're all, you know, they're all going to be represented in these two rubrics, so it was important that we had representation for as many different groups as we could. It is the administrators, the licensed administrators, who will do the evaluation work.
This would be the principals and APs?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah, thank you both for the helpful information, the work to you and the committee. Could you just maybe shed some more light? You kind of talked about, you know, the professional growth plan and really educators taking on the role of learners. Like, what does that look like? And, you know, obviously, that's a great mindset to have.
Just to share a little bit about how we've done some alignment work. So at the same time we were revising the evaluation rubrics, we were working through a process with the Department of Education. The group was the MN MTSS Tier One cohort, and we identified areas of focus in a three-year professional learning plan that we will be implementing starting this year. The focus of the three-year professional learning plan will be competency A, instructional design and delivery, competency B, assessment and data-informed decision-making, and competency C, inclusive and culturally responsive environments. I also want to then share that, and we don't have the slide, I'm really proud of it, it's really cool work, and I wish we had it now, but it shows the alignment between our three-year professional learning plan and the strategic direction. So we'll make sure at some point you get to see it. Our communications team has done a nice job of revamping these and organizing them for us, so.
So how it works is, at the beginning of the school year, teachers look at the rubric, they do a self-assessment on it and establish some places where they want to do with growth. Then depending where they are in their evaluation cycle, they work with either an instructional coach or the instructional leader of the building, the principal or assistant principal, to really develop, where is this going to look, what am I going to do, here's the professional learning I'm going to do. We're working hard, as Stephen mentioned, the alignment piece. How do our professional development days help support the teacher growth as part of their plan? So it's a really collaborative process, again, all focused on learning and growing, because we know when teachers grow, our students grow, so.
Thanks. Thank you for this presentation and for all the work on the evaluation. It's really exciting to see how this is all coming together. My question is actually about Q Comp and the instructional coaches model. I know that we had transitioned from an embedded in the schools model, not this year, the year before, to a more centralized model with just those six coaches serving the whole district. Could you speak a little bit about how well those coaches were utilized? Were they able to get to meet all the needs in all the buildings? Were there any challenges that were, that kind of arose in that model? And are we going forward with this centralized model again next year?
That's a good question. So I'll take that last part first. Yes, we will continue with that same model. When we look at participation, we had 428 staff members out of five...
Five-eightish.
Five-eightish that participated in a coaching experience, which included either a formal coaching cycle or what we called a learning lab, which also involved peer support, which is part of a component of the state statute. We also tried to embed some of those learning labs into the work that was already being done at a curriculum level. For instance, we worked with the secondary science teachers on some of the work, the curriculum work that they were doing, to just embed their learning along with, you know, the curriculum work that was already part of their regular calendar work or regular scheduled curriculum work. So what it then felt like for the teacher was, we're not piling on all of this work, right? And so it should be the nat, you know, it should be a natural outcome of some of that work, especially around curriculum, to do learning, and we just wanted to emphasize that. So the coaches were there to be able to do that.
So I think, you know, being the first year of developing the system in the spaces, you know, was really trying to like, well, this is what we think might work. We've learned a lot on how we may make some changes next year to, again, strengthen systems and strengthen that alignment. And no, because of how our evaluation process is set up, our coaches worked with all probationary staff and any continuing contract teacher in the first two years of their summative evaluation. They did not work with any teachers in the final three. That's why you're only seeing 428 instead of 580. It's because of, wasn't they chose that, it's, that's how our evaluation model works. So I think there are areas of growth always, you know, so we'll continue. It'd be nice to have the same model for two years in a row, and then just strengthen the systems that we put in place.
I think the hard part is, when we established the learning labs, there were some schools that we were able to get to in October. There were some schools that we weren't able to get to until January, February. It's just the nature of having six people trying to serve, you know, 500 and some educators, right? And so this next year, we're looking at trying to organize the calendar a bit better to more efficiently impact teachers. So it's not like, well, I'm here three weeks in October, and then you never see me again. So we're going to do some things strategically with the calendar to try to balance that out a little bit. Just an example of one of the improvements we're going to try to make.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for going through the, all of this is really helpful and educational for me. And thanks for talking about the coaching experience. Whoever's question that was, I appreciate it as well. I actually have a question on the TDEP. Can you walk through what that portion was? And is that like a certain number of hours of training that they have to do? And then I have a follow-up question. Is our way that we have this sort of structured where it's sort of 10% for performance and 90% for doing the training, is that sort of the standard operating procedure for how to structure the pay portion of it?
Well, statute does dictate some of the things that we do. So statute shares that as a probationary teacher, all of those evaluations are done by the instructional leader of the building, so either principal, assistant principal, and they do that three times a year. We also believe that as a probationary teachers, we want to provide, one of our goals is to have teacher retention, so we do provide some coaching support alongside that to complement the model. And, you know, that's one piece we do. The continuing contract teachers, which we are tenure one and year two, those are the ones that are working primarily with our coaches. Not a lot of contacts with the building administrator, and year three is strictly the building administrator. And the, you know, the growth model and those pieces is just really focused on what do you want to grow on. They have individual student achievement goals that they set that are based on standardized tests, and they work to help the teachers with skills to their students to meet those goals as well.
Regarding the 1090, it's not uncommon. That's what it, I've seen it in other places.
Thank you.
Do either of you know, and I've been following legislatively, and I heard that Governor Walz, you know, in his initial budget proposal was to get rid of Q Comp. Have you heard, because you were kind of the coordinator in networking and other, in the Q Comp space, I haven't heard much about it since that initial proposal. Have you heard anything about its future?
I have not from the House or the Senate side. I don't know what feedback you may have.
I have received an update from this morning.
Okay.
And Q Comp was not discussed in the update, so I'm assuming that it's going to continue.
It's going to stay. Okay.
That's what we're hearing.
Okay.
You know, again, until they come back and they approve things, but right now I'm hearing Q Comp will be back.
Okay.
And it was going to be back next year anyhow. It would have been for '27 and beyond is what they were looking at. But I've heard no action on Q Comp at this point.
Okay. I always love hearing, because I think when we first started, we realized that a lot of our systems were not aligned. And so I love when I can hear that we're going back to that pony plan, and we're going back to the strategic plan, and we're really kind of building everything we do around that. So I appreciate your efforts to streamline that and focus it. One thing I had is, I noticed kind of the qualitative data that you have from people who are going through the coaching. Now, this year we have one data person on staff, I believe. Is there any plan to maybe, or do you get any kind of data-driven results from Q Comp or from the coaching cycles beyond the subjective?
Go ahead.
So we talked about, you know, the 428 people that worked with Q Comp, with the coaches. We're still in the process of gathering some of that survey data around the teacher growth and the student growth. We're also collecting the data, like how many of our staff met their individual student achievement goals. So that's all data that we collect as well. And I do think that's an area of growth that we can have with our coaching model as to what kind of data do we want to collect. We lean real heavy into Jim Knight's work and one of the success factors of a coaching program, and they've identified some pieces. It's just some work I think that we have to continue to do in those spaces.
Great.
And I think, you know, just to add on to that, we're talking about achievement data all the time in all of those, you know, different conversations, whether it's with the coaches, with the coaches and educators, and really looking at what moves that needle most efficiently. And again, when you get down to thinking about having access to six coaches, we may not be able to get to everybody. Where I feel like they're making some inroads this year has really been doing some of that systems work, especially where we need to align things so that it works, you know, works for our educators. And that's why I'm excited about, you know, the opportunity to move into using this new evaluation rubric. And then having a playbook, you know, an instructional playbook that educators can access with the support of a coach or a principal, that again will support the teachers moving through that evaluation rubric. Those are tools that we haven't had in the past, so those will be nice supports.
Absolutely.
428 teachers are undergoing this, but we have a lot more teachers than that. Who's not doing the Q Comp?
So it's not that they're not doing Q Comp. They're just in that T3, that third year of their summative evaluation.
Okay.
Which in our model, we've established only building administrators are working with that other 150, 60 teachers across the district.
All right, thanks.
Just looks different.
Yeah, so they'd have, then they would be working directly with their evaluator or principal.
All right.
Great. Well, thank you for this update and all the work that you're doing to, you're keeping busy. Thank you. Okay, our next report update is the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness update. Caitlin will come to do this, formerly known as World's Best Workforce.
Formerly known as, yes. All right, good evening. Thank you for inviting me to give you this update. Director Sherman set me up to say this used to be called World's Best Workforce, so some of you may remember this work from World's Best Workforce. And if you think back to November, we had a presentation on comprehensive achievement and civic readiness that was in combination with our achievement and integration plan. There is some, certainly some nexus points that exist, but they follow different goal-setting timelines. And we'll have an opportunity this time next year, or a little earlier than this hopefully next year, to align those a little more than they're currently aligned. So with regard to our comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, these are the five goal areas. These are set by the state. So we don't get to choose these five goal areas. What we do is we look at these five goal areas, and then we evaluate kind of what our baseline data says about what our needs are and where we need to set our goals. We do this work in conjunction with our district curriculum advisory committee to get some community and teacher feedback as well. So the way this will work, I'll kind of take you through what was in our last year's plan and where we lie with regard to our last year's plan and what... and where, where we lie with regard to our, our last year's plan and what we're proposing for next year. So previously for the all students are ready for school, we were looking at preschool students in the Core Advantage, which is an assessment that they use around literacy and numeracy skills for kindergarten. We have consistently met that goal, I believe. We certainly met it last year, far exceeded it. We are, after meeting, we had a really good meeting.
Go back a slide.
Go back a slide.
What's the goal?
That students are ready for.
Yeah, what's the percentage?
Eighty-five percent.
That's what, they demonstrated it, which was a decrease from last year. So do we know what the goal is?
Right. The, the goal is 80%.
Okay, that's.
Is that what you're getting?
Yep.
The goal is 80%. So we've consistently exceeded 80%. We did go down. We're proposing to, to change how we measure that. What we're proposing is to look at our incoming kindergarteners that are meeting those age-appropriate literacy and numeracy benchmarks in that fall fast bridge screening. So right here, what you see is the 68% in, in reading to 72% in reading, and from 84% in math to 85% in math. Math, they're coming in pretty, pretty great in math already. And then what the other, what the committee also talked about is it's also nice to include what are some action steps? What are things that we're already doing to help us meet this target or things we could or should be doing? So we would look at kind of tracking our incoming kindergarten students with that initial fall screening to see how well is our, our preschool programs, some of which we have control over because there are programs and some of which we don't because there are other people, you know, they're choice programs of my parents or they're in-home or whatever. The next area is the closing the racial and economic achievement gaps. For as long as I've been here, I feel like we've delivered these presentations and said not on track, not met. If you remember in the fall, we had a discussion at this table around why, why we call out certain races and not others. And so we looked at a proposal of reducing the achievement gap in reading and math between non-white students and white students and just kind of looking at, instead of disaggregating. When you start disaggregating by race in certain places, you're talking about one, two, three kids in certain spots. When we look at it more holistically, it gives us a little better of a picture of where we need to work. And then free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch. So we're looking at trying to decrease by at least, decrease that gap by 5% for five consecutive years using a winter-to-winter fast bridge screening measure. So if we, if we do this, we should be pretty close to closed in, here, it'll go this way, I think we called it out, right? If we do this, you can see our gaps here in blue with our baseline data. Depending on, if we're successful, we could close some of these gaps, you know, in five years, four to five years.
So these are proficiency numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that's that specific area and looking at it that way. I will say that next year, like I said, next year, when we're looking at our achievement and integration plan, we're going to want to try and align some of these, specifically the racial and economic achievement gaps with some of the work we're doing in achievement and integration and what goals we've set, what goals we will set in that plan and make sure that these two things are talking to each other and we're aligning that work.
Can I ask something on the free and reduced lunch? Is that a reliable measure still? It is, okay. We're able to identify that.
Okay, the next series, all students are career and college ready. This was our 23, 24 result. We don't have our 24, 25 result yet. What we're proposing to change is to increase student credits earned in advanced coursework, concurrent enrollment, work-based learning, and internships by 3% per year for five consecutive years. It's pretty different from what this goal is, but it feels more comprehensive and feels like we can capture more of the students and really understand better what our students are taking and how, kind of what trajectory that they're on. And so I think when we move this direction, we'll have to spend a lot of time really defining what some of this is. What constitutes advanced coursework? Does that project lead the way? Is it, is it just AP and college in the schools? Like, what is that? So we would, that would be some of our next steps is to really establish what is that advanced coursework.
This is aligning a lot of the work with pathways and with what we're doing with our college in the schools and AP work.
Yep.
And concurrent.
Enrollment, yep. And then all students graduate. So this was a previous, previous goal. We lumped, you know, the ALC together with the high school, which they're very different programs designed to do very different things for students. So we talked about in the fall, kind of pulling those apart and setting some different targets for each of those areas. And what we're proposing is to maintain the four-year graduation rate at Stotter Area High School. It's currently just over 95%, I think. And then to increase the five years. So previously, we were always looking at the four-year graduation rate for the ALC and we don't feel like that's a very appropriate thing to be measuring within an alternative learning center. So looking at that five-year graduation rate and that seven-year graduation rate.
And Dr. Funk, you stated this in the past, what's the average, like, duration for ALC students? Is it five or seven? Is it like a percentage for each?
I'd say it's closer to five, but we have, we have, as you can see by the numbers, some who stay as long as seven. So, and, and again, just the fact that our kids are seeking an alternative program because the traditional high school is not working for them. And then to just have the unrealistic expectation that, okay, well, now you're in a new environment, now you're going to graduate in four years. They've got a lot of other stressors in their life. And so this is just recognizing that and acknowledging it. Unfortunately, the federal government doesn't acknowledge this, and so we are, we are put on, I think every, every large school district in the state is kind of put on the need to improve those by the federal government because their ALCs are not graduating enough kids in four years. So it's, they need to catch up.
Does an ALC student need to do the same things to graduate as a person at the high school? Same requirement?
Well, they need to get all the credits, all the required credits, yes, but they do it in a much different way.
Okay.
So they, they do a lot of bundling, a lot, it's a lot of project-based learning, so there, it's much more interdisciplinary, right? Like, you're working on a social studies credit and an English credit at the same time by doing one.
Okay.
But yes, they still have the Carnegie, Carnegie credits that they.
Right, thanks.
And then this was the, the new fun one that I spoke to this fall that I think one of you asked me, well, how are we going to measure this? And I believe my answer at the time, because it was, this was a new goal area, what does it look like for all students to be prepared to be lifelong learners? I actually went back and watched in November to see, how did I answer that? Because I remember thinking the same thing, like, I don't know quite how we're going to measure this. And what I answered at the time was, well, if we can do all of the previous goal areas well and we can start meeting these targets, we're going to create students who are prepared to be lifelong learners. And so I was like, oh, well, let's take that and capture that into a goal. So there's a lot of words in this, but it's really just a summary of all the previous goal areas. And so what we're saying is, over the next, really four years, five, four to five years, if we can consistently be meeting in these goal areas, that that progress is an indicator that we are developing lifelong learners. And so our next step is, these goals are submitted to MDE next week, by Sunday. I'll do it on Friday. And then a lot of this is alignment. I'm really excited where the, the direction that some of these goals have shifted towards because it does feel more aligned to the work that we're already doing and some of the, some of the actions we're taking and, and subsequently measuring. So that feels really good. I think the opportunity for improvement next year is to really align the achievement and integration plan and the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness plans.
Yes, Dr. Funk.
So you'll notice that this is the initial presentation on these goals, and they have due by the 15th of June, and you're not meeting again as a board to approve these goals until June 17th. So what we are going to do is, because there's a statutory deadline that we have to have it submitted, we are going to submit. And then between now and the 17th, if the board says, okay, we want you to look at this or tweak this goal, we can, we can approve the goals on the 17th, however you see fit, and we can just send, send an addendum to MDE saying, here's our updated goal. So that's kind of the process. We will get, we have a number of new team members in teaching and learning, so we'll make sure that we do this in May next year so that we can meet their, their mid-month deadline.
I'll own that. That's me. This snuck up on me.
All good.
So that is kind of the comprehensive achievement civic readiness plan in a nutshell. What questions do you have that we didn't address along the way?
Thank you.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Good, good information. Appreciate the continued work. It definitely seems to be much more clear and more measurable than what we've had in the past. One thing I did a question on was the, you know, all students career and college ready. I know you talked about having, you know, work-based learning and internships. How do we define like success within students going into trade, so they don't have any type of required admission test? Like, how do we measure that early on in high school?
Yeah, I, honestly, that was our intention of including work-based learning and internships in this because we have many students through the pathways or through other connections that they have in the community that are engaging in kind of apprenticeships and internships. And so how, to answer your question, how we would measure success in that, that's a, that's a really valuable question. Those internships are tied to credit and grades, so we could look at, at the most kind of superficial level, are they meeting the minimum requirement to pass the course? We certainly could work with our pathways teachers to identify what are some specific targets that we want to see throughout the course of a semester as a student is participating in a internship or apprenticeship. And then our career tech education, so some of the courses that students take at 916 Career Tech Ed, they have a lot of testing curriculum-based measures built within their courses or even, you know, like welding certificates or forklift certificates. So you could look at, how are they, what are they using as their kind of end marker if you get through this career tech education course? Are you coming out with a, some form of a certification or a certification readiness type component?
Thank you.
ACT also has something called Work Keys, which is an assessment really of, it's more focused on career and, and career and tech as opposed to the, the college, college program. So it can be focused in different areas of the, of the technical workforce. And so that's another area. I don't think we've done much with, with Work Keys here, but that is something. And that, and the students who pass that then get a certification from that. So that, that is another area we could really take a look at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we advance just to the next slide? My question's on the next slide. There it is. Excellent. The goal status on this says not on track, but it looks like we at least increased. Could you talk a little bit more about why that was flagged as a not-on-track goal?
So originally, the, the goal that was set was 96% of students will graduate in four years.
Okay.
So when, and, and because, A, we didn't meet that 90, even when you disaggregate ALC and the high school, we're sitting at about 95%, which we feel is, is good, right? But then that's brought down to that 93 or the 92, depending on which year you're looking at, because we were lumping those together, the ALC numbers and the, so it was one measure of ALC programs and the high school programs.
And the goal was 96% total.
96% total.
Okay.
So when we resubmit, our, what we are going to resubmit is to look at a maintenance goal to maintain that four-year graduation rate at Sora High School and then much more attainable goals for a five and seven-year graduation rate at ALC.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So you're going to submit this to the state. Do they actually, at that time, evaluate, do they validate it somehow and say, good, that, that works for us? And then, I guess on the back end of that process, do they come back and say, do they give feedback? I mean, like, like, on results?
Really. They tell you that they've received our submission and that we met the deadline. They certainly give feedback if they flag a component of it as being out of compliance. And then they will leave you sometimes detailed information, sometimes cryptic information, and then you call and say, help me understand what's out of compliance here, and you work with them on it. But to my knowledge, and this is, again, year one-ish, I submitted it last year and then this year, I didn't get any feedback last year when we resubmitted it.
Where you'll get the feedback is what used to be the World's Best Workforce. They would give you feedback after that is submitted. They would say, okay, we've reviewed it, here's what we think. But on the initial goals, I've never seen, seen feedback.
And our committee, so World's Best Workforce and our district curriculum advisory committee, which we kind of merged our curriculum committee and our World's Best Workforce committee into one because there was so much overlap between the work that they were doing and frankly, the members of those committees. They did a lot of this feedback on the front end. And I'd like to keep that process for next year. It was, I got a lot of positive feedback from the committee members on just the level of engagement and being able to really dig into understanding what comprehensive achievement civic readiness is and kind of gathering what their input was based on previous year's information. So hopefully that will keep, have, allow us to have tighter, tighter goals that are more aligned to the work we're doing and what our committee and public thinks are important things to target.
Can I ask, I know the legislature puts forth those major goals that then, I mean, we're kind of stuck with those. How often do those get evaluated?
They do it through this, they do it through the World's Best Workforce or this process annually sometime in the fall. Oh, you mean those goals themselves?
The five areas.
The five.
That's a legislative, that's a legislative decision.
Okay.
Because do you remember a time when they've been different?
Well, they added one this year and they removed one. So they used to, it would, all students read well by third grade, right?
Yes.
That's now moved on to the local literacy plan and it's not by third grade, it's all students read at grade level. They took the last legislative session, I think, two, two years ago, removed, removed that one and put it on to the local literacy plan and then added all students are prepared to be lifelong learners.
I know that when you came into this group, it was a little bit of a, kind of, it wasn't exactly aligned and coordinated. And so I can see the progress from where it was to where it is. I know you're not like 100% happy with it, but I just want to acknowledge the work you and the committee have done because it, it's starting to take shape from my point of view, just from one year to the next. And I appreciate the really defined action steps, like even knowing that we are going to be, you know, we're working with preschools and in-home providers, that's such a great action step to capture because we all know how important that is to come into school really ready to learn. So just those action steps give me a good idea of where you're going to, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. The, the committee gets, that, that was the committee's feedback, put, put action steps with.
That's, that's incredible. That's very helpful.
It is.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Under strategic direction C, utilize systems and align resources in efficient manner to support learning. We're going to have a preliminary budget update with Marie.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, members of the community. So this evening's update's going to be pretty brief. Not a lot has changed in the past couple of weeks since I gave the last presentation. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things on these slides and then really focus in on the last slide with all of the funds. Again, we're still monitoring what's happening at the legislature. I think that's the big highlight on this slide right here is just making sure that we're getting those legislative changes in as we know them. And if not, we will be coming to you with a budget revision during the year if those changes are after the budget adoption. So we will do our best in getting that in and keeping you aware of what we find out or what we calculate before the 17th. Again, just to highlight the fund balance history, what it's projected to be as of June 30th. I- what it's projected to be as of June 30th, I believe it was 1.2%. And that's on that slide that we'll review in a minute. Our framework here, as that budget document comes forward to you in less than a week, that, our budget summary book. And then, just to highlight this, the preliminary revenue is just about shy of $6,500, $6,600 change. So there wasn't much change since you last saw this. And the same with the expenditures. Some of the categories in the revenue did change as we tweak some of the coding. Sometimes we code some of the state aids or the other differently. We wanted to get them into the right UFRS codes for the audit. So just making sure we had those in the right categories. But again, you'll see that not a lot has changed since the last time. And then on the general fund expenditures, again, we had one change in the second column. We had an addition, just a little over a couple hundred thousand, we added. We have what currently is the school readiness program budget. We added in, they're shifting it to the voluntary pre-K budget. We added that in as an adjustment. And then we had some other adjustments with our compensatory as far as the benefit lines. So you'll see some adjustments in there. But overall, that difference again was the $6,600 as far as the revenue and expense. So we were just moving some of the lines around with salaries and benefits. Overall, nothing was added or taken away. We just have to adjust within the UFRS. It's the accounting structure. So you shouldn't see anything bottom line other than $6,600. And then this is the one I wanted to just kind of highlight more because it's showing the big picture of all our funds and just kind of walk through going across what you see. And then we'll have the budget summary book, which will kind of tell the narrative of all funds and what's happening at the district. And that will be shared with the board early next week. So what you see on the top line for the general fund, so the projected fund balance for July 1, that is what was shared with you in April when we were doing our budget revision and what that picture as of April was of our expenditures and what we were projecting we would end the year, this year at. And so that's that bottom box that you see of all of our fund balance categories. So the non-spendable fund balance is our inventory or prepaid items. Inventory would be if we had inventories such as like facilities items or prepaid items if we're prepaying for equipment or materials into the future fiscal year. So currently, we have prepaid about $78,000. Then our restricted category, that's the one that we are planning to spend. And you'll see that $1,070 in that fourth column over. That's the operating capital. That's planned for the literacy curriculum. So that is where we are planning on utilizing of that $4,235,000 way down in that bottom box. We are planning to draw on our operating capital fund balance, just a little over $1 million. And that was planned. And then our assigned fund balance, we are projecting about $2.7 million. And that's for items such as severance, our facility use improvements. Q comp has a little balance. We do assign or that. We also have grants and donations. Those are things at the school level that we do assign and carry over year to year. And then, of course, last but not least is the unassigned fund balance that we are projecting at 1.2%. So that's how we start out our first column. And we do that for all the different funds. What we're projecting this current year, we're ending starting July 1. And so we walk across our projected revenue that, for next year. And we just finished walking through the revenue for the general fund and the expenditures for the general fund, that use of fund balance for the curriculum. And then projecting our ending fund balance for all the way a year out from now, what that, what we would land, that projected fund balance for all of the different fund balance categories. We are not planning on drawing from our unassigned at all. So at this moment, we are projecting that level 1.2%. It could grow, but we don't plan on dropping it any. My plan is to grow that. That is the goal. So the other funds that you see up here are food service. That is pretty level for next year, the projected revenue and expenditures because of the reimbursements from the state. Community service fund again has a very healthy projection with revenue and then expenditures being projected under it, under. So they will have a projected gain in their fund balance next year. And then building construction, just want to highlight that one. We do have a projected fund balance, and that's due to the school building bonds for the projects. And as you know, projects, it's all about timing. So we are carrying over a pretty large sum of our project funds or those bond funds due to the timing. This is ongoing with our projects, with the bond levy. And then we do plan on issuing the remaining balance of that bond levy during our winter months and along with some LTFM bonds that we will be coming forward to you, probably during the winter months, January, somewhere in there, to do that second round. And then you'll see the projected expenditures in the building construction. And that is all timed. That is all planned based on what we had discussed over a year ago with all of the school projects. So you'll see that overall net change in fund balance was all timed, that planned spend of those projects. Leaving us next year, a projected fund balance of about $31.5 million because those projects run over the summer before the schools open that following fall. So there's, there's timing of projects and expenditures, and we're on a cash flow schedule. So that is all mindfully planned with our construction. And then debt service, that is how we pay back the bonds. And we plan that through the levy. So again, that fund balance and the revenue and expenditures going out are all timed with the levy and how that change in fund balance is. And then last but not least is the custodial fund. That again is a flow-through of scholarship funds. And again, that is timed and appropriately accounted for.
Did you, Dr. Funk?
We explained to the board why we can't move the $2.7 million in assigned to unassigned and increase our fund balance.
That again is all dedicated dollars. And again, we've, we've had those dollars. Some are for donations for, for example, a big part of that is like the partnership plan. They're dedicated dollars for a specific purpose. Others are grants for purposes, grants that came from the state for specific reasons that have carryover. Others are like your other donations or activities. And then we do also have, again, we assign carryover for Q comp funds in there.
So they have strings attached to them?
They're, exactly. They're all different categories that we as a district set aside. And then the restricted are funds, again, that are by law or statute have to be set aside. There are specific statutes for those dollars. So that concludes the presentation this evening. This was the, the main slide I wanted to get before you this evening. So next Monday, early next week, we'll be sending a budget book summary. And then we'll also be posting that online just so that it is available for transparency just of all the information we've been putting together over the past, geez, nine months or so of data on the budget with all of this that's come together.
So caveat to that, if in the unlikelihood the legislature or potential, the legislature gets their act together and settles this week, then we might need a day or two more to update the board, the book you're going to be getting with the budget for next year. If they don't, what I'm going to suggest is that you will get the budget that we will ask you to approve on the 17th. So we'll get it to you over a week ahead of time. And then we will come in August, or July, excuse me, and we will come forward right out of the gate with a revised budget to match what, you know, whatever the legislature's given us. So that's kind of how I'm framing it in my mind. Because we can't ask Marie if they don't settle till next Tuesday or Wednesday and suddenly, "Okay, Marie, we need you to go back in and crank all the new information based upon what we just received." You won't have current information. She'll be working into the late hours of the night. So our plan at this point is unless, you know, the next couple of days, the legislature comes forward with, "Here's really what you're getting and we're approving it", then we will be making the assumption that, you know, currently what you see in front of you is going to be within that book. And that book, by the way, will have details by line item of, okay, how we're expending this. And so it'll be much more detailed than what you're seeing on the screen. And so have, feel free to reach out to Marie or myself once you receive that next week.
So July would be an update. If, I'm assuming we're not going to get that information. It doesn't look like we're going to legislatively. I mean, I'd be shocked if we did.
I would at this point, too. You know, I think the, the, I'm seeing that the education working group has come to some sort of an agreement. But I am not comfortable putting forth a budget based upon an agreement that has not been approved by the legislature yet. So I think we're safer to just take the known at this point and come back for our meeting in July and heavy amend the budget right out of the gate.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you. Any questions for Marie? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is a long-term facility maintenance item, the 10-year plan. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, Chair Sherman, members of the board. Tonight's our annual look at our 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. We'll look at FY, so fiscal year '27. So we're looking at projects that'll happen next summer, not starting tomorrow, but happening next summer and then the nine summers after that. So as we put together this 10-year plan, we really start out to be mindful of taxpayer dollars and then the needs of our facilities. So at any point, the district can raise, lower, increase, decrease the number of projects we want to do. But we're really trying to find a balance between keeping our buildings, keeping our facilities in good shape as well as the impact on the levy and the tax dollars within our community. And so we're really trying to find that, that sweet spot. So this is a fluid document that changes from year to year. So really, we're just looking at this 10-year plan. And when we meet in the, the end of June, we'll be approving the 10-year plan. But the reality is we're looking at just the FY '27 is the one we're approving for next summer. And then we'll bring the revised 10-year plan next year with the 10 years after that. So in your packet, you have a list of next-year projects. Those projects is a list that's developed with a lot of meetings. So our facility staff met with the principals, with the head engineers, with our architect team, with our construction manager team to put a list of things together. As you look at the list and even up on the screen, you're going to see a lot of orange over the next few years. And what orange is mechanical. So there's a lot of mechanical things within our buildings that go unnoticed, but things that need to be updated and replaced. So when we look at these projects, we also have a lot of conversation with our finance department and saying, "Okay, how much do we want to spend on projects this year? What impact does that have on the overall levy?" And so our total for this year is $9,366,0435. And these are our next summer projects. You're going to notice on the list in front of you, all the buildings have some sort of project except for Lake Almo and except for Anderson because these are next-year projects. Next year, those students will be transitioning to a new school. So that's why there's no projects at those dedicated sites. So I'll answer questions kind of overall in the 10-year plan here in a second and any individual questions that you have. But just kind of just to highlight some of the things, just kind of the bigger ticket items. Looking at Lily Lake is kind of twofold. One is the four-classroom renovation. Just looking at, starting around the building of replacing casework, ceiling, flooring, lights, et cetera, and kind of working our way around Lily Lake, similar to what we've done Stonebridge the last few summers. Also at Lily Lake is replacing the steam boiler and two of their rooftop units. So that's kind of our big-ticket items at Lily Lake. At Oakland, it's kind of a mix of LTFM dollars and bond dollars. So kind of the bigger-ticket items with the bond, we're getting city sewer and water bringing to the building. So now the LTFM dollars are abandoning, abandoning the septic system and then sealing the well. So it's kind of the after effect of, once you bring the city sewer and water in, you know, what are you doing with your existing septic and well that you have there? At the high school, it's cooling towers, kind of by the loading dock area. We're replacing our cooling towers. At Stillwater Middle, it's replacing sprinkler pipes. And if you remember, a few years ago, we had an issue with a water leak with our fire sprinkler. And so now it's replacing all the piping there around that area to kind of finishing out that, that issue. And then there's a lot of kind of parking lot, mill and overlay of redoing our parking lots at Rutherford, the bus garage. And then you'll also notice Oakland's parking lots, mill and overlay. So once the construction's done, there's going to be a lot of truck traffic and those sorts of things, just the wear and tear on those lots. Then once it's all done, we'll come in and mill overlay those parking lots to have that refreshed once construction's done. So I didn't touch on all of them, but I'll kind of stop here and pause if you have any questions about specific items or the 10-year plan up on the screen.
Dr. Funk?
Do you want to explain to the board the long-term facilities maintenance process? So we're going to be asking them at the next meeting to approve this plan and how this ties in to the general levy that we approve in, for our local taxpayers in December of every year. So how this component, what does it mean to be, what are long-term facilities dollars? Where do we get them from? How does it tie into the levy?
So there's two separate funding sources that we have. One is off our levy. The second one is we sell bonds. So there's a portion of bonds that we sell for our construction projects with our new elementaries and our renovations that we're doing. We'll also have a portion of LTFM bonds. And then other portion of that is what they call PEGO or part of our levy that we have, that we certify every year. And so that's why this dollar amount change and fluctuates and we have a conversation with finances because for our taxpayer, we want to keep that dollar value level from a tax base every year after year. And so that's why we have a talk of, "Okay, do we do more projects this year, less project last year"? And if you were to sit down and analyze the 10-year plan last year and this year, there are some differences between what FY '27 was last year and what FY '27 is this year, looking at that overall plan and how long-term facility maintenance fits into the bigger, larger picture of our budget and of our overall levy. Long-term facility and maintenance dollars are really replacing like-for-like. So we can't really add anything, but it's replacing here boilers, parking lots, casework. It's anything, if you were to take the building, turn it upside down and shake it, anything that doesn't fall out is long-term facility. down and shake it, anything that doesn't fall out is long-term facility maintenance. So it's not desks, it's not chairs, it's not cafeteria tables, anything there, but anything that's to a wall or attached, those are things that can be replaced long-term facility maintenance-wise from a dollar standpoint.
Yes.
Uh, so to that point, and Mark, thanks for the great information on this. Uh, we'll see the Bayport School, Lake Elmo, future, uh, LTFM plans will include those types of ongoing maintenance costs.
In the future.
Once we're, once we're in the new buildings.
Correct.
Okay. Was that usually a one- or two-year-out type of planning that we'll start seeing that?
So are you, are you saying the current Lake Elmo and Bayport, or the new ones?
Yeah, they'll be, you're not going to see much of them on there for a while.
Okay, should be good, okay.
This is the first kind of year, Brookview was open in '17. This is kind of the first time Brookview started to emerge in this, 10 years out.
Eight to 10-year windows before we can expect anything. Okay, good.
And it's real minor at Brookview. I mean, so it's kind of, you, you're not going to see anything in year two or three, hopefully.
Otherwise, it's warranted, I'm sure.
There's a lot of stuff there, hopefully, yeah. There, there's other needs across the district that, that bubble up. And that's the other thing, is you're weighing, you know, every district or every building has things that they want to see, and you only listen to all those needs, and then you say, okay, let's prioritize what we really need to do next year, what's the year after, and those sorts of things. So I'm guessing the new Lake Elmo and Bayport may not be high on the next few years.
No, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Sorry to waste everybody's time on this, but can you help me settle a bit? Are we resurfacing the track this year at the High School?
Yes. Um, no, we're replacing it. So we're replacing the track at the high school this year, yes.
That's more than resurfacing, that's digging it up then?
Yes, it's there, the, the adhesive that sticks, and we actually are digging up the cement under the track, probably more detail than you care, um, but there's cracking in the cement underneath the track, in which is causing it not to, to stick anymore, and there's some spots in there that we kind of had to get through the track season. Now, this summer, we're redoing the, the asphalt underneath and replacing the track.
Thanks.
Starting next week.
You win the bet or not?
It's on camera, so you guys know now.
Yep. Mark, in terms of the philosophy of, um, LTFM, are we looking at things like waiting till they break and then planning, or are we trying to really anticipate what maintenance things are maybe close to breaking?
We try to be as proactive as possible.
Yeah.
Now, if something happens in a roof or a boiler breaks down, that'll come to the head of the list. But we try to look out and say, okay, we're at 20 years on this roof, the boiler's about, down five years left, we're trying to replace it before it gets to that point. Because once it gets to that point, you know, our dollars are spent somewhere else, when you look in terms of replacement. So we really want to get ahead of that, so we have dedicated dollars. And that's why you kind of see the intentional plan here with all the orange, is because we need to have a really strong focus the next few years on our mechanical systems to make sure that things run smoothly in future years.
So what happens when things break?
Um, there are, if, if you look at the back of the, there are like miscellaneous dollars in there. So we do set aside a few district-wide dollars, so as things come up, which they always do, that we have some dollars to, um, kind of anticipate or kind of put towards issues that come up. But with the bigger-ticket items, we try to, um, plan for moving forward. So we'll patchwork things to get through the year, and then if we need to, we'd move something up the list in a hurry if we had to.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, we're going to have you stick around, though, for transportation update.
So just want to take a few moments here and kind of answer questions around transportation as we look into next school year. So I know the last couple of years, we've had a little, um, slow start, and so we're being very intentional this year about, um, making sure we're ready to hit the ground running at the beginning of the school year. So first off, just kind of the purpose is who we serve, and just kind of just to get a sense of the, the students and the areas that we serve in transportation, take a high overview look of our annual transportation costs over the last four years, really talk and kind of dig into some of the challenges we've had and some of the systems improvement we've been trying to work on here the last eight months in anticipation to next year. And then lastly, kind of what is our commitment to students, staff, and families as we move forward as a transportation department? So looking at, um, who we serve, currently, we serve, um, 8,337 students. Now, you're going to look, if you, if you look at the enrollment, say, wait a second, that's more kids than we have, how can you transport that many? Um, so we transport all of our schools, so all of our elementary schools, kids, all the middle school kids, the high school kids, um, the students at the Early Childhood Family Center, the students here at Oak Park, the Bridge, and ALC. Also, we have, um, four charter schools or non-publics with Salem Lutheran, New Heights, St. Cry Catholic, and St. Cry Prep. Um, next year, we are dropping Salem with a different start time. Salem, um, has declined our transportation, and they're, they're going to change their start times to go somewhere else. Well, there'll only be three, um, charter schools and non-prep, or, uh, non-publics for next year. So within our transportation, we run 75 regular ed routes. And what regular, uh, the seven, what, what one route constitutes is a morning and a PM. So we run a three-tier system, so kind of one route is kind of one, two, three in the morning tiers, one, two, three in the afternoon. Um, so we have some that run three, all three, some that run two tiers, um, those sorts of things with, with their regular ed routes. Our special ed routes, um, there's 51 of them. Now, our special ed is a little different with those routes, because they transport to all the schools we just discussed. They also transport to 22 additional locations each and every day that are separate, um, special education, um, buildings or schools, as well as care and treatment facilities. So based on student needs written into IEPs or, um, students placed in care and treatment facilities, we will transport those students to those facilities or those schools based on needs, um, within their individual education plan. Looking at our, uh, district as a whole, we have over 150 square miles, and the unique challenge for us is we're very long and narrow. You know, from top to bottom, we're looking about 30 miles. And so there's different terrain, um, you know, there's rural, there's, um, urban areas, and so we cover a lot of, uh, square footage and trying to transport kids to and from school. We also run a three-tier system to try to maximize the buses that we have and minimize the cost that we, that we incur. So, um, each bus is considered a route, and the buses are, um, paid for, kind of, it's a four-hour kind of minimum, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. And so we have 75 as kind of our base. We have 75 routes with our, um, secondary students. Then we use those same buses for the tier-two elementary, and then we use the same buses for tier-three charters and non-publics versus having more routes. We try to condense the number, that's why we do three tiers, to condense the number of buses we have on the road at any given time to try to minimize the cost that we have, um, for our transportation system. Now, looking at our transportation costs over the last four years, our costs are broken down in three areas. So the 75 general ed routes, you can kind of see what the cost per route is there. Our special education, which I talked about, um, you can see the cost per route there for the last four years. And then our midday, our special education, um, students, a lot of them have some midday routes as well. What middays are, is could be from, um, uh, high school or here at Oak Park to a job site, where they may go to Culvers or Walgreens, wherever for a job site. We have a lot of students that are on modified or shortened days, where they may have half-days where they're picked up at school, let's say after fourth hour, or they show up to school after third hour. So those middays are in between. And a midday route is also for, and all of these routes, um, there may be the cost of the bus, but there also could be, um, bus aids or bus monitors, um, with our special education students as well within that. So as we look at the total costs or total expenditures that we have, that's not just the routes, that's all our transportation costs together. It's our routes, it's the bus aid, the bus monitors, it's the transportation staff, it's our own district vehicles, our district gasoline, all those sorts of things. It's not just route costs there on the bottom, it's our total expenditures that we paid in our transportation department, um, each of those four years.
Yes, Dr. Funk?
Okay, I'm going to talk briefly about this slide, because I think you could take a look at the, just look at any, anything above the total expenditures there. You can see the, well, anywhere in the slide from left to right is significantly more expensive the further right you get on that slide. Um, without going into too much detail, I want to share this with the board and the public, okay? In '21, '22, the district chose to switch vendors, okay? So we decided to go a different route with the new vendor at, at the end of that school year. In April of '22, I think it was, um, sometime in the spring of '22, the district, um, went out for an RFP, and we received nobody to bid, okay, as a result of that. Um, through relationships within the state, uh, we found a vendor who said they would be willing to come in and, uh, transport our kids and do a first-class job of that. And they have, and that's Schmitty's, and they've come in and they've done a really great job. As you can see, the, if you're looking at the cost difference, but just looking at general ed between '21 per route and '22, you can see it was at a significant premium. And that, that contract is tied to the Consumer Price Index, so there's a, there's a piece in there that, uh, as the Consumer Price Index goes up, so does our cost. Okay, so that, that is a factor that is involved there. We have a six-year contract with, uh, Schmitty and Sons Bus Company, okay? And we are now finishing year three, all right? And again, they've done a first-class job for us, um, since, uh, um, since they started. Um, so you could see that, uh, it's expensive, um, but there's a, there's a reason behind that, on, on why we are paying what we are. Um, and that's because, you know, we, we decided to switch for, uh, for whatever reason. Um, so when we're looking at the bottom line, and we have Marie coming up here, you know, uh, presentation after presentation showing us that we have a 1% fund balance, um, you can see that our transportation expenditures in '21 and '21, '22, now those were both impacted somewhat by COVID, okay? Uh, but, you know, we're paying approximately almost $5 million more, um, now than we were four years ago. And when we have a tight budget, um, $5 million we're paying to transport our students, um, is painful for me as your superintendent, uh, when we could be utilizing that elsewhere to support the needs of our staff and our, you know, our students. So when people are out asking, well, why don't you have any money? Where's your fund balance? Um, why, why are you, you know, so, so tight financially? This is a significant component of it. And, you know, Mark's going to talk here a little bit more, but before he does, I guess I'll just stop and say, before we move on to the other part of this presentation, are there anything, questions or anything from the board that, uh, you know, we might be able to?
I just went back and looked, um, because I remember when we were doing the operating levy renewal and the tech, and the capital projects tech levy, um, we had talked about 2.8 million was going to be freed up by passing that capital projects, that tech levy, um, 2.8 million was going to, um, be available and go back into the, uh, general fund. And then we had the inflationary increase, I think it was, on the operating levy, um, that was above and beyond the renewal. That was going to generate another 2.7 million, when I went back and looked. So when you look at what Dr. Funk said with 5 million, the revenue generated from that capital projects and the operating levy renewal was 5.5 annually. So, and I remember when we were looking at it, we said, this didn't, this didn't, you know, factor in what, the unknown of transportation. And I don't think anyone really quite understood how significant that transport, the transportation was going to be. So when people look at, well, you generated, you renewed that operating levy, you did the tech levy, that was 5.5, and, and this is 5. So you can kind of see the challenges. And then on that operating levy was already, um, and Chris can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but was already $7 million in cuts that that, um, operating levy was operating on, already. So, as we were already kind of operating under $7 million of cuts before. So just an ongoing challenge for transportation. So I appreciate, I know we can't get into specifics regarding this to a great extent, but I appreciate it.
Could I ask a question about, um, how do we get funding for transportation? Is there a specific amount of money that the state gives us? Um, and then how does that factor in when we've got our, um, charters and non-publics as well? Do we get additional funding for them, or is it just a, how does that all work? And do we get enough?
A couple of things. So, no, we don't get enough. So based, it's based on enrollment. So you get a, a dollar amount, I'm blanking on what it is, I want to say it's around $170 or so per student, plus the sparsity aid. And so sparsity aid is for us, because our district is so many square miles, we get additional dollars to transport because we're bigger than, you know, a, a different district. So there's a percentage that we get in sparsity. So when you look at the legislative platform, the last few years, we talked about increasing sparsity aid, that would help with our transportation costs. The second part of your question talked about, you know, the charter schools and non-publics and how that, um, those dollars, how much we're paying for that versus our students. That's hard to do a total, and here's why. Because we try to be as efficient as we can. St. Cry Prep is the biggest one. If I go back to, you just look, the total number of students. So St. Cry Prep, being 890 students, is on a tier of itself. The other three that are being a little bit smaller numbers that we transport, we actually embed those transportation students within our elementary runs. So we'll pick up our elementary students and our Salem, New Heights, and St. Cry Catholics all together, and then we'll drop them off at the elementary schools. And then we'll run, um, bus shuttles from elementary schools to those charter schools. So they're actually within our elementary student, um, route tier. So it's hard to break out those numbers, because we try to embed, because we can, to embed those with them and not incur those additional costs in a separate tier three. And then the tier three is the St. Cry Prep, so that would be kind of above and beyond what we would do with our students. But to give an overall total, it's difficult, because we embed those three charter schools and non-publics in our own transportation costs.
Quick follow-up. So do we, um, when we're go up, we're putting in for the aid for transportation, do we use the 8,700?
Correct, yes, it's total number. Yes, it's a total number.
Not our enrollment.
Correct.
It's everybody that we are.
Correct.
Transporting. Thank you for that explanation.
So transportation is automatic for elementary and middle school, and opt-in or opt-out for the high school?
Great leading question. So once we get to now, as, as we looked at our systems, how about you pin that, and I'll come back to it when we're done. If I don't answer your question, answer in about five minutes.
Okay, that was leading to another question, so maybe that'll be answered as well, right?
Okay. Anything else just on the cost aspect? All right, so looking at some of the challenges that we have, um, we're heading into kind of the fourth year of different management or different leaderships and staffing within transportation. So really trying to build a solid team, um, to help grow and, and build some of the efficiencies within our staffing, within our routing process here. But we've had some, um, hiccups along the way the last couple of years. Um, also, last year especially, because we went to a new routing software, we had inaccurate student data. And our student information system and our routing software data was not accurate, which led to delayed routes and, and parents finalizing the routes. Once we sent them out, um, parents were routed to where they lived a few years ago, not necessarily where they live today. So we had to kind of reroute different things, because the information that we had, um, was inaccurate, and it just created a, um, an environment that's not something that we want to have as a start of the school year for our Stillwater schools and all of our charters and non-publics as well. So moving forward, we recognize that, we own that and say, okay, it happened, let's make sure we don't have it again. And, and I really want to acknowledge, um, our bus garage and our drivers. They were really critical at the beginning of the year of listening to families, listening to parents, talking through, um, things with them, and then also bringing information back to us about, um, information that we needed for our routing. So there's really good communication with the garage at the beginning of the year and also for, um, these meetings as well. So once the school year kind of got up and running, kind of around MEA-ish and things settled down a little bit, we had monthly meetings, and sometimes they were, you know, bi-weekly, um, more than monthly, with our tech team, with our transportation team, with the bus garage, around our information and data flow. Looking at our student information of Power School, what information is there? Is it accurate, is it correct, and how does that, um, flow into Traversa, which is our routing software, to make sure the data is flowing correctly, we're getting the correct information back and forth, um, around addresses, around, um, coding of students, whether the student is a, a general education student or a special education student, or they're going to care and treatment, um, program. And then, um, we started to, with next year, changing start times, is we have, we, we started to build a test site. And so we couldn't, um, build and practice new routes within our current routing system, because the beauty of our routing system is it's live. And the one thing we ran into is, when parents would call at the beginning of the year, we'd make changes as, let's say, 2 o'clock, a family called, we'd make the change instantly. Well, as soon as we hit save on our routing software, it went directly to the tablets in the bus. And so it would automatically change the driver's route, thinking the student that we just routed is now on that stop. And so we learned that we can't make changes during our drive time, because it, it's live and it's, and it's up and running. Moving forward, and as we planned for next year, we couldn't make changes within our site, because any changes you make is running live. So we had to rebuild the system where now our elementary is the first tier, our secondary is the second tier, and then our charters and, and non-publics are our third tier. So we created a sandbox, something totally separate, and took our current students this year and kind of superimposed them to next year, because we couldn't take our students this year and, and move them up a grade, because that would affect our system. And then I'll created a separate sandbox site where we tried to reroute our students for next year and try to be more efficient as we could, which I'll get into here in a second. Also, um, we're still in the process, but we're developing process- Also, we're still in the process, but we're developing processes to verify busing and enrollment information with our families as soon as they enroll. We're clarifying address changes and alternate addresses. That changes a lot. So a lot of times when they enroll, they'll say what their house address. But when it comes to transportation, they may go to a daycare before or after school, or they may go to a separate parent. Or if grandma or grandpa live within that boundary, they can go to their house. So they may have alternate addresses for where they're going to get dropped off in the afternoon and where they're going to get picked up in the morning. So making sure each kid has the appropriate information of where pickup is, where drop-off is. Also, working with special education around, because that is fluid and ever-evolving around students with IEPs and their transportation needs and accommodations and different levels of service that they have between all of our sites. And then just really establishing our routing and communication flows, not only with us in the district, but also with our staff and our families in a timely manner. We really try to shoot for that three to five days. So anytime there's a routing change, whether it's an address change, whether you haven't rode all year and now you want to, we really shoot for that three to five days from the time that you enroll or say you need a change to then you're on the bus there in a very timely manner. So it's really working on our systems within our school district. Now, Pete's question is this year, so in the past, we had all, we routed all elementary kids, all middle school kids, and all ninth-grade kids. We had an opt-in for sophomores, juniors, and seniors, basically because they could drive. What we tried to do to be more efficient this year is we had an opt-in process for everybody. So we sent communication, they had a month-long span to enroll in the transportation. We send weekly emails, not only to our students in the Stillwater School District, but we had the similar process with our charter schools and non-publics and had weekly meetings with them and giving them the list of, hey, here's week one, here's the kids that have already enrolled. All right, here's week two, here's the kid in the road. So they can follow up, make those phone calls to make sure that they have the accurate information back sent to us. So with the start time change, we actually are able to be more efficient with our 75 routes next year than we were this year. And so what I mean by that is it really helps with the start time change, actually, because if you look at the first tier, right now is secondary, that we use all 75 buses. The second tier, we use 68 or 69 buses. So there's six or seven buses that don't have a tier-two route. So they run a tier-one, and then they jump to tier-three. And so next year, by moving the 75 instead of one and moving that to tier-two, we can shorten some of that ride time for our drivers and the time we're billed for. So there's running routes two and three, not one and three. So we're able to create some efficiencies by having a little tighter routing span for tier-two and tier-three bus drivers. Also, we've had added some additional staff to work within our transportation department to make it more efficient. And we've really had a great collaboration with Schmidde's, which we have talked about, and I know Dr. Funk talked about as well. Lastly, in the spring, our transportation team and the representatives from the garage, we went to every building and every site here in our district to talk about two things. One is transportation this year. At the beginning of the year, how was it for you? What were some things we needed to work on? How's transportation going out now? What are things that we need to think about moving forward to help us make it a more smooth transition for you and your site? The second question was, next year now, with start times changing and you may move tiers, what issues are you anticipating? What questions do you have for us? And have an open dialogue with all of our buildings and programs around transportation next year. And we use that information to help tweak our routes for next year to make sure we can be as proactive as possible. And it was really good, honest conversations and feedback with all of our buildings. And I appreciate our principals taking the time to really talk about things that went well and some challenges they had within their sites and within their buildings. Lastly here, earlier family outreach. I'll own it. Part of our problem is, yes, we had inaccurate data. Part of it was, we finished our routing on a Friday, and you know what? This would be great. Let's get the routing out Friday afternoon. Families can think about it, they can look over when it comes back Monday. We can hit the ground running with changes. In hindsight, it gave, we showed up Monday morning, three days behind the April because families would call Friday night, Saturday, or Sunday. You show up Monday, you already have three days of phone calls that you just show up, and you're already behind. So looking forward is, we need to, when we send out the routes, do it at the beginning of the week. So when families and parents call, we can be responsive there that day, start to get ahead of the curve, and don't always just end up as far back as you can. Another component of that is sending it out earlier within the calendar leading up to workshop week. We want to send it a week or two earlier than we did this year so we can be more proactive in some of the issues and changes. Because there's always going to be changes. It just happens. When you transport 8,700 kids, there's bound to be changes somewhere along the line. That's common, we know it is going to happen. But to have those phone calls, make those changes, get those things done before workshop week. So when families sit down at the elementary with ready, set, go conferences, they have all that information, we start with secondary, we're ready to rock and roll at the beginning of the school year. So we're going to be mindful about getting it out earlier and getting it out earlier in the week so we can be more responsive to families as they call and make changes. And then the last thing is, we're piloting a new help desk ticket system with our tech department. So the other part that we came into and run into last year is because we had so many issues, families, and rightfully so, because I'd probably do the same thing, is they'd call the district and leave a message. Then they'd do an email, then they'd call the bus garage. And then so you had people working on the same issue with multiple people because it was a centralized system. Now, as calls come in to coming into a ticketing system and kind of have one spot, a centralized spot to say, here's the list. And then we can start to delegate and move, okay, this person works on this, this person works on that, to really maximize our time to really target the questions and changes that parents are looking for. So I know that's a lot of information, but I just want to end on, we are committed that all year long, from the first day of school to the last day of school, all students will have a safe, reliable transportation each and every day. Second of all, we're going to continue to improve our processes based on family and staff feedback. And if there's things you hear, we are more than receptive to continually improve our process. And we want to operate effectively and as efficiently as we can each and every year and build year to year to year to make transportation better as we move forward. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Funk?
Couple of other things. So go back to the, one of your routes or the cost slide, either one of them. Go, go, there you go. All right, you can see we've got 51 special education routes. And we also, go forward a slide. And you can see we've got special education routes and we've got midday routes, which are also special education. Okay? Smaller fans, maybe. One of the things that we have to take a look at is, what is our process to determine who gets special education transportation? And what's our process to determine a midday route? Here's just an example, okay? And I had a conversation with somebody in one of our programs sometime in the last two or three weeks. We have students who, because of, there's some decision that was made somewhere that, okay, we want them coming in at 9 o'clock in the morning. And school starts at 8 o'clock in the morning. And so to best meet the needs of the student, we are going to send a separate vehicle to pick that student up at 9 o'clock. And so the question that I asked is, well, what would happen if we picked a student up at 8 o'clock? Well, they don't want to come at 8 o'clock. So we are, we're making decisions, I think in some cases, we're meeting the needs of our students, but, okay, are there opportunities to meet the needs of our students, knowing we are in a fiscal constraint environment that we're operating in? And so I think, working with our administrators, this is something that we can really start to take a look at. And I know Paul is already, within special services, taking a look at, okay, well, how do we make IEP decisions? And why do kids, you know, have separate needs? And are there some ways to tighten some things up? The other thing I would like to mention to the board is, we've hired somebody, and Tom will probably have him come and introduce you to you, probably in, before school starts. But Tom Rizley, he's a 30-year Navy veteran. He was a router for St. Cloud Schools for a number of years. He most recently ran the entire transportation system for the Becker School System since about, I think, 2015 or '17. And so he knows routing, he knows bus garage activities, he knows the ins and outs of bus systems, more so than anybody we've had since we've hired you, since we've been here. And Tom has already come in and saying, okay, here's some ideas that you can have to run things more efficient. So as a part of that, I think we're already going to see some potential savings that we're not going to see as much of an increase in transportation next year as perhaps we could have. So I just want to reaffirm to the board that, in my opinion, we have to get these costs under control. And we, this is a point of discussion within the central services. And, you know, and that's my commitment to you, and I think Mark's as well. But in addition to that, and part of the reason we had the presentation tonight is the start of the last two school years have been an absolute fiasco. And so I'm appreciative to Mark and his team within the transportation and to Carissa, who's really kind of been taking a lead role in this as well for really starting to look at our processes and our systems. You know, there's just something, just simple tonight. We talk about, okay, we're going to validate addresses, we're going to devalidate addresses. Well, one thing we found out last fall is we, parents didn't know what their address was in the system, and we wouldn't let them in to see it. Okay, but that was just a simple, okay, somebody turned the switch on. So I feel much better about it. I told Mark and I told Tom, I said, my goal for the first day of school is 100% of the kids are picked up on time, and they're dropped off and they get back home on time. That's the goal for the first day of school. And that's quite the stretch goal, considering how we've been the last couple of years. But I think what you've seen from Mark tonight is a real proactive attempt to get this done. So, thank you.
So I'm getting more efficient, you know, working on systems. Obviously, technology can help. That's all great. But is it too early to be looking at different providers? Or, I mean, to be looking at, or, you know, looking at renegotiating moving forward? And, I mean, obviously, they know more about us now than they did when they, when we signed this contract. So maybe we're, we?
It's a great question. I've never seen a six-year contract in my life, okay, until this one. But I think for Schmidde's, you know, they knew that we had a struggle with, you know, whatever was happening with our previous provider. And they wanted, if we're going to come in here and we're going to commit, we want a long-term guarantee. So I think there potentially are some opportunities within the contract to look at, okay, are there some ways we can look at some cost saving moving forward? And again, I mean, we've got an outstanding relationship with them right now. And I think they will want to stay here long-term as well. So, I mean, as there's some things that they can do to help us, you know, keep the commitment long-term. But we still have probably at least another year before we can really start to look into some savings contractually, I think. Great question.
Following up on that, I was surprised to hear that players like First Student or National Express or STA weren't responding to the RFP. Is there something structural in the way that we have our system set up? Or is there something that we can do to make ourselves more attractive to receive more RFPs in the future?
I think it was just circumstances upon, about this specific situation. And I can talk to you more offline about that later. But I think it was just the specific situation we were in.
Thank you.
You know, if you were to hang out at any of the schools when those buses were unloading, one might see 20 people or less getting off of a bus. So I mentioned the opt-in. I know even when my kids went to school, you'd opt-in, even if you didn't intend to use it because you might need it on the day that your car is broken down or something like that. So if you need the ride, you're going to say, I want the ride. But if you don't need it anymore, you just let it be. And is there a way that you could continually rejigger routes to make it more efficient and fill the buses?
So some of that will happen at secondary schools. And so a lot of, when we do ridership, because we'll do ridership a couple of times a year to see who's riding buses or not. But we're really intentional to do our load counts on the times in between activity seasons. So kids, you know, in the middle of soccer, they may not need the bus because they're playing soccer. But before soccer season and after soccer season, they're going to need a bus. And so we kind of do, right now, that's the way we did. Now, in terms of the opt-ins, opt-outs, we, that's why we did this process, to see who's actually riding, who wants it, who needs it, the bus. And then now, as we route for next year, we can be intentional about who signed up, who needs it.
At all grades? I'm sorry?
In all grades, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Kind of piggybacking off that, if families miss the boat on signing their kids up, I'm assuming they can still do it at some point? It's not like you're cut off?
Yep, no, they're not, they're not cut off. At some point here in the summer, you know, we include as many as you can. But as we get close to the beginning of the year, you know, they may not have it for day one as we get in, as we get closer. But they can still do it right now. And I know our communications team will be sending out another message to families. It's kind of, hey, here's the last chance. I know we've talked about this before, but if you need it right now, here's kind of one last shot before we start our routing. And so we have to wait to do our routing until the rollover happens. By rollover, I mean, starting in the first week of July is rolling all our kids up a grade. Our kindergarten's become first grade, first becomes second, and so forth. Once that happens from a district level, now we can start to route because we have accurate information. If we were to do it now, when the rollover comes, that information goes away. So we have a busy July ahead of us.
Yes, you do. Can I just make one quick comment? I just really appreciate how much learning has come out of the beginning of this year's kind of challenges. I just remember it being a very difficult first couple of weeks of school for staff and for families. So it sounds like you guys have really looked at the whole system and dug in and have done a lot of planning and problem solving. So I'm really hopeful that this year goes really well and really appreciate all the work that's going into it.
It will.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sarah. So regarding special ed, and I think even some regular ed, you know, we got 150 square miles, but we transport well beyond that in some cases, right? How far do we transport some of these kids? And?
So special education, they're a little separate. So special education is IEP-driven. So special education is not a decision transportation makes. That's a division, a decision IEP team makes at the school level. That information comes to us, and now that's a legal document. So we have to look and say, you know, we have a student that goes to Faribault every day for a school that's, you know, for them. They're traveling all over the metro to different special education or care and treatment facilities that we have. We also do have McKinney-Vento students that live outside of our district that we bring into our school district because they fall under the McKinney-Vento Act as well. So there are special, there's unique circumstances around. But the general is, we do, for special education, we do go to multiple sites every single day. Outside our district.
Okay, the same transportation formula, we get a certain dollar amount per kid. So, but if we have to transport them to Cambridge or to Faribault?
Yep, and we do, we do Cambridge as well. Yep, yep. I'm sure you remember, but I had some of those routes. But yes, we do transport kids off places that they need the services for.
And it also, look, isn't the legislature this year cutting 5% one year, 10% the next year for sped?
Reimbursement. We're reimbursed two years after the, after the cost. So currently, the reimbursement's 100%. So one of their cuts is, in '27, it's going to be 95% reimbursement. And in '28, it's going to be 90% reimbursement. And so these costs are going to continue to?
But even as you do the math, if it's 100% reimbursed and you're two years out, if you can see every year the costs increase, your reimbursement for that year is not going to?
You're never catching up.
Yeah, you never catch up.
Okay.
But to be cutting further, I think it just underscores and why I really appreciate Paul looking at the student services and just improving the communication flow with how decisions that get made impact the financial well-being of the district. So I appreciate that. Did Sarah, did you have a question?
Yeah, just thanks for the really useful and helpful information. Is there any data or any, like, known success stories about use of, like, AI for increasing busing and transportation efficiencies?
In terms of like routing and stuff, yeah. So when we have a routing soft, that's what they, part of our routing software.
Okay.
So the majority of kids, special education's a little different, but a majority of them is? is, is kind of, there's a route framework and the, there's a button, it's called assigned student stops and runs. So it's like, as you do scheduling, the mass of it, you can get 80% of the kids, you know, kind of the efficiencies. And now you have to think, we have a lot of unique one-off situations too which add to it. You know, we have a student that lives on Highway 36. Well within the boundary of the school, there's an elementary age kid and a middle age kid. You can't stop a bus legally on Highway 36. So you have to take a van to pick up that student in their driveway, turn around safely and come out. You know, so you're adding a cost there just because of where our district is. You know, there are students that live on Manning or other places where they may be living on a hill or, you know, there's sorts of things where, again, you can't stop a bus because of what road it's on that you have to do. And it falls under our general education, but yet based on where we are, there's private roads in the northern part, southern, that is one lane only, you know, that's a mile long. They live at the end of that. Again, you can't get a bus through and turn around. So there are unique situations that do add to our costs because of just the geography of our district.
Having said that, how many of you on the board have seen a bus just sitting on the side of the road? Okay, so AI would be very useful, okay? Because what, what's happening, the bus driver is, okay, I'm getting too far into my route too fast. So now I have to wait so that I'm not too early to the next stop. And so we're paying for that bus driver to wait because we have some inefficiencies in how the times that we're... So, you know, I think that's where it could be very beneficial in the future is, okay, what's your load capacity? You know, what's, what's the, I don't know, is it called load time? I mean, what's the best, best load time per student so that...
You know, how long does it stop? How long is each kid? And there's, there's a formula that comes in to say, you know, when you stop, is it, is it 30 seconds? Is it 15 seconds? How long does it take each kid? You know, and we play with those load times to say, okay, if we run it at this, what do our routes look like? We run it at this, what does it look like? And you can play, use different scenarios. That's kind of what we're doing in July, is saying, okay, what makes sense?
Got it.
And the efficiency of that is, okay, if we are able to shave enough time off, okay, then guess what? Maybe we can go pick up more kids and less routes. So that's one of the things that I've talked with Tom about, is taking a look at that as a potential operational efficiency for us. But yeah, I think utilizing AI in that capacity would be very, very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you again, Mark. And Dr. Funk, thanks for the really helpful historical context around this, you know, transportation costs. And, you know, I think that provides some really good context. And Mark, and thanks for your accountability and transparency around some past, you know, challenges we've had the last couple of years and the opportunities for improvements. One question I did have was, I know something that the board, we saw a lot of emails last fall, start of school year of, you know, I've called, I left a voicemail and I sent an email, and you kind of touched upon this new ticketing system. Is that going to merge these different sources together? So if someone calls in and emails it, it's going to come as the same household, so you're not, again, duplicating efforts?
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, mind that process.
Well, that'd be great. Yes, that could be fantastic. So yeah, kudos. Very good.
A few years ago, there was actually a split vote on the board to approve these card readers on the bus. And I imagine there could be an AI follow-up to this. Is that in play at all, that the kids will wave in?
Nope. We, we have that capability, but we don't currently have that in operation right now.
Is there no desire to use that? And the reason I think is the follow-up of that is, if you know, then there'd be a lot of data that would be gathered from that. Kids are riding, they're not riding, and then you make adjustments?
Problem is, you're relying on the kid to have the card. Okay? And whoops, forgot it, oops. You know, it's, so we have not done that. The other thing is, they thought, well, we use these same cards to go through the lunch line. Okay? Well, if you talk to the people in the kitchens and they're going to have kids use cards to go through, they're like, you're going to create chaos. We will have lines back out the door. Just give them, give them a number to punch in and go. So this is an example of, okay, the technology is there to, we could potentially do it, but it, I think, it just never got off the ground. And this, this decision, I think, was made before I even, before I arrived on the scene. So I think we piloted it a couple of years ago, maybe in one building. But no, there's no, there's no long-term commitment to doing that.
Okay.
We just need to chip all the kids, then we'll be good.
Eyeballs.
I'm kidding.
It's probably coming.
Anything else?
Did you have a question, Parker?
I do. It may be best to answer offline because it may have some specific numbers in it. But I'm just curious about the, you know, it looks like from the contracts, it's up 25-ish percent for the general ed and 15-ish percent for special ed in '21 to '23, or '22 to '23. But in that same year, there's a 70% increase in our transportation expenditures, which that didn't align to me. I would have expected to have a 20 to 30% jump or a 15 to 25% jump year to year.
I, I think what that is, and Mark, you can tell me if I'm wrong, I wasn't here, but I think those both, '21 and '22, they are COVID-related. So we, we reduced the number of routes considerably based upon COVID. And so we went back to a full schedule in '22, '23. And I think that's why you saw, I don't know if that's accurate or not.
We can, we can discuss more.
All right, thanks a lot.
Is that possible, just for like, I know we could track the cross subsidy for special ed and for EL services. Can we ever quantify what we, like the, just the difference, that cross subsidy in our transportation for legislators or for...
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay. I know that we're almost done with this funding cycle, but it would be helpful for me as a board member to be able to talk about that cross.
Versus what we get.
Yes. Yeah. And I think that would be helpful to see on future legislative platforms. And I know we've asked a lot of questions. Is there anything that families can be doing now? Or, and I'm sure this is being covered in communications, but to help with the district's goal of kind of having that great start?
The only thing is that they haven't registered DoSo.
Okay.
And the, the email is, is schoolbus.org.
Schoolbus@stillwaterschools.org is the email.
Okay, so sign up.
Correct.
If they move, let us know.
Yeah, or if you have an address change or a daycare change where you went to daycare last year, you know, if an elementary student that went to a daycare last year or this year in the morning because of, and start times changed, and now you could get picked up at home or that morning daycare gets taken away, let us know because that impacts us. So if there's any changes to your address or pickup or drop-off locations, that'd be much appreciated before July.
Great. And does that go out in communication to families at some point?
Just a reminder in last week's school newsletters, and we will be sending out a communication again in a couple of weeks.
And I just wanted to end this, and I think Director Thielander, Andrew did a good job just kind of saying this. I personally appreciate you owning kind of, and taking accountability for the pain that has been in the community with families. It just means a lot, I think, to hear that. And, and just seeing the work that your team has been doing this year. I mean, just anecdotally, I'm, we're all around and you guys have worked really hard this year. So I'm excited to see the, the benefits. And, and I just appreciate that for your whole team.
We don't want that again either.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate your update.
Okay. So we have one action item this evening, and this is a resolution approving Northeast Metro 916 long-term facility maintenance. And you're going to stick around and walk us through that.
I'm here for one more. So similarly to my first presentation around the long-term facility maintenance, we partner with 916. So 916 has the opportunity to do a long-term facility maintenance plan as well. You can see in the packet, they have their 10-year plan laid out of what their expenditures are for both next fiscal year and the ones following it. Their total for next year is $597,600. So of the member groups, it's kind of proportionally distributed across that member groups, we pay 10.2% of that. So our portion is $60,754.54. And so you can see the resolution here up on the screen. When that, if that gets approved, this dollar amount then will go on top of the 10-year plan that we discussed here a little bit ago. So next meeting, when it comes to the official documents, there's four official documents that have to go to MDE. We'll have our LTFM dollars, our health and safety, and then the 916 portion here would be a part of that as well. So all of our member, the member groups of 916 have to approve it in order to move forward. We're just approving not the total, but just our 60,000 portion here for 916. So, and we talked about LTFM before, so I'll kind of leave it at that. But if anybody has questions or comments, let me know.
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Director Thielander with the second. So we'll have time here for questions or comments, and then we'll do a roll call vote on the resolution. I know Andrew serves as kind of the board member on 916, so I wanted to start with you if you had anything or to comment on this or any discussion that would be relevant from the meetings that you have, but...
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you, Chair Sherman. And, you know, Director Hockert's done such a great job serving in that role previously. I know the board thinks very highly of her and the staff at 916, and it's been an honor to be able to serve with them as well and see some of the work that's being done in partnership with our school district. I know Paul and his team does a lot of work with them, and some are, you know, our districts and our district members, more vulnerable students. So I've been able to learn more probably than most of you in terms of what those LTFM types of projects look like. And I think it's could be well-served to best take care of, you know, our students and our member district students as well. So I would be in support of it.
Great. Yes.
The facility we're talking about is really the White Bear Lake South Campus, right? The, that building? Or is it something else?
No, they have, they have multiple facilities. So there's the South Campus, they have a Cora building that has Eastview there as well, they have Pankalo, they have Carner Blue.
Cora, okay.
Yeah, I know there's a few I'm missing there, but there's six, seven different buildings, if my memory serves me right. So yes, it's, it's that, but there's also more as well.
Okay, I didn't realize.
Any other comments or questions?
Two questions. Can someone just give me the three bullets on what 916 is? That'd be helpful. And then second is, I was just curious, this is $60,000? Why is that a board vote versus just being approved without the board?
Because it's a, we're a partner district, and it's a, it's a resolution that our district will contribute to the overall pool. It's long-term facilities maintenance dollars that we're spending regardless of the number.
So the 916 board can approve dollars from our district? You know, they can't say, we're going to take this, we're going to take that. So they set the parameters, what they would like, and then they send that out to the member district to say, do you approve for us to have increased facilities?
And since it's LTFM, we're asking the board to approve it as opposed to, you're right, you know, something under $175,000. But 916, I don't, it, it's a consortium of school districts in the Northeast Metro, and we have special education services that they provide to us. You know, I don't know, Paul, if you, you want to just come on up and give your two cents on what they do?
I think there's multiple components of 916, but the majority of what we use them for is what we call our federal study four program. So we have some students with very high needs that we need to have very structured and supportive environments for. Those students can't be served within our, within our buildings, our school buildings. So they have very specific programs for those kids. And we have, I don't want to give a whole number right now, but somewhere in the range of, well, for our elementary kids, you know, about 40 kids that, you know, a lot more autism, and that's a really big component of our programming there. They also provide low incident teachers that, well, teachers that serve low incident disabilities in areas. So we contract with them, they provide itinerant services for us, like, like DHH teachers, deaf and hard hearing teachers, staff that we, you know, we might just need a point six of this very specialized staff. And so then we contract with 916 for that staff. So that's the majority. And they serve kids from, you know, kindergarten all the way up through transition programings, and they're really the students that we, we don't have the facilities to serve. So that's that co-op, all the districts around have that same level high need, and we have our students attend there.
They also have a career and tech program. They build a house every year. And so we've, some of our students go and are part of that. They have, we don't utilize it, but they have an ALC that they have for, for people in the Northeast Metro. So there are a variety of different programs. Primarily, you know, our, our primary relationship really is twofold, I think. It's through special education and there's a, the career and tech component of it is significant as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, very well stated. And I would just add, you know, it just provides, you know, just some economies of scale, you know, where these districts, member districts can access some of these resources. Thankfully, Stillwater does a lot of the great things and has the resources and the systems in place, but there's some other districts that don't have an ALC and things like that. So like for Stillwater, our, our site is at the Early Childhood Family Center, which is the auditory and oral program. Whereas in every district has, not all of them, but a lot of them have some type of site in their district boundaries. But it's just a great way of serving students. And I know, talk about the career and tech, that's, I think they have a dental program, dental assistance, the only program in the state, which is, which is pretty neat, and it's over at Century. So, yeah.
When we vote, I'm going to abstain from the vote because I might have a conflict of interest on that one. So I'm just, I think we'll be fine without my votes, right? Is there a procedure? What's the, right? Abstain?